is on his way right here and I thought let me just Director DePass should be calling in. Why don't we start me, I want to welcome a new committee member, Danny Cage. Director Lee Grant. So welcome and I thought what we do is just, just around the inside table, anybody who comes up and has present to the table, if you're not at the table right now, just introduce yourself when you come to the table. So Director Green, you want to start?
Well, my name is Director Herman Green. And I'm excited to be on committee. I don't know what else I'm supposed to say. Being here, let's go.
Aaron Pressburg, Senior Manager of Intervening Catability.
Laura Zima with the Office of Teaching and Learning.
And Sharon Rich, the Chief of Human Resources.
Jackson Lightburg, Assistant Director of Education.
Um, Danny Cage, Director of Student Transportation.
Sheen Smith, Director of Community Engagement.
Rachel Lenz, Director of General Council Office.
Ms. Harp, the Contractual Health Council.
I'm Daniel, Chief of Operating House.
Karen Brady, Director of Student Transportation, but not a committee member. Sorry, I'm on table.
Great, and I think we have Director Lowry, or did she disappear?
I'm here. This is Ailey Lowry. I'm going to be listening into the meeting and participating virtually with my camera off because I am sick.
Director DePass on?
I'm on. Hello, everybody. My name is Michelle DePass. I'm the Chair of the School Board and I'm also attending virtually because I am not driving today. I'm being climate friendly.
That's a very sustainable thing for you to do and I hope you did turn out your board packet. Especially the policy that we're about ready to.
It's all good.
Good afternoon. I'm Jonathan Gerson, Chief of Staff, Director of District.
Welcome, Jonathan. Is there anybody else on table?
Nope.
Um, so we have a very full agenda. And it's going to, it's going to roll out a little bit differently than I think we talked about at the last meeting, just given some intervening conversations that happened. And we do have, on the first order, agenda item was the climate crisis and I'm going to ask just if we can have a brief schedule change to move two agenda items that should be relatively quick. And then we'll go to the, back to the rank of order. And the two items that I'd like to move up is Agenda Item Number Three, which is Policies for Recisions. We have two proposed recisions being that are planned. I don't know if you want to speak completely to live staff was proposing a figure or something. And we have the two. Both 3.20, 0.11, planning time. We'll start with that one. It doesn't in recognition of the purpose of conducting such needs, the board may incorporate into the regular school calendar time group which seems allowed in school. It doesn't really provide a policy. The board has that permission. The board does that. In our effort to streamline the policy manual and making information useful, this doesn't give much information to people who are using it. It was last amended in 2002. The second policy for proposed rescission is 5.20, 0.08, 0 evaluation teachers. This is all handled in the Spanish language agreement. And it should be the source document for that one. As well as some, some statutory provisions that they touch on. Are there any, any committee questions about the two proposed items for, for, to recommend to the full board for rescission? Okay. Can I call for a vote on the recommendation? All in favor?
I thought we had to do the thing like we did.
What? No, it's, it's less informal because it's just a recommendation. It's not, we can't actually formally decide. So we're making recommendations to the full board.
I'm just getting ready to make motions.
I know, you were very good about that the other night.
So I'll just, I'll just get ready. Okay, go ahead.
Director DePass and Lowry, are, are you supportive of these to the whole board?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Any objection from to you, right? He has, I did, sorry. Okay. Thank you. So well, those will, we'll ask board leadership to put that on the agenda the next meeting. On the next agenda item that I wanted to move up.
And excuse me, please, can you read? Do you mind reading the, the policy numbers again, please?
So it is Policy 3.20, 0.11. That's planning time and the other one is Policy 5.20, 0.80, the evaluation of teachers.
Thank you.
And both those policies are in board books with links to the actual policies. So the next agenda item was not contemplated, but we had, and that I'm going to ask that we move up, which is the, an amendment to the cafeteria policy and that policy is 5.10, 0.90. And we had a request last week from staff to either amend or or suspend the policy. Pardon, or rescind. And so in recognition to what, essentially what, we have a federal law that we had made some changes to the policy and in whatever board that was that put this in the policy, we have 50 pages of our cafeteria plan, which is essentially an employee benefits plan and it focuses on pre-tax and after-tax expenditures. But essentially, we don't need this policy and, and we shouldn't have it in our policy manual. Because it's just actually copying the plan. Anytime I launch a plan, we have to change the policy. So as an alternative, we have a we have an amendment that is in your packet and essentially it would delete all of the contents, the 50 something pages of the policy. And replace it with the, with essentially two paragraphs. And the paragraph say, "In order to deliver on special ambition, core home schools needs to attract, retain and support qualified workforce. In support of that, PPS offers comprehensive employee benefits offerings, including health and wellness benefits and flexible spending accounts." Legally required compliance changes in district cafeteria plan will be publicly posted 10 days before plan changes are made. Financial implications of the changes will be shared with and may be reviewed by the board. Changes to the cafeteria plan that represent new material benefit programs will be approved by the board. The district's cafeteria plan will be publicly posted. So essentially taking a plan out of policy, which is not the right place for it, and creating a mechanism that staff can recommend changes to, to the plan and actually implement them after they've posted the changes and anything that's, a new benefit, employee benefits that's offered that those would be approved by the board.
She got a call. I'll just say, why Gina's here? Does someone else want to speak to this about why the changes, why we need to, why we should be considering this and why we need to bring it to the next
I, I think you covered it very well. It's, the cafeteria plan is not something that belongs in the policy manual. It requires amendments to comply with the law from time to time. It doesn't belong there anyway. It makes it harder to amend that when it is a policy and not just a challenge. There's some endeavor is to make that happen and we have policy. We have planned changes that need to happen by the end of the calendar year in order to be compliant. So this furthers the district's ability to do that this calendar year as well as going forward. Do you want to add any other features?
And I'm so sorry, I got a phone call and I needed to, I started to step back, but the, those changes to the plan allow us to offer tax, the tax benefits that are generally available, they allow us to offer them to employees. So the consequence of not being able to amend the plan would mean our employees would not get, you know, tax deductions that would. So that's the timing importance that is based on the tax year.
And then our tax.
Some questions, under normal circumstances, I understand it doesn't get changed every year, but under normal circumstances, just having a 10-day posting of plan changes is not a, like any sort of hardship or anything.
I'm going to look at our director benefits, YG, to confirm my affirmation of that.
No, and typically, you know, changes to your point aren't made very often. This last year, we had some related to COVID. So some special exceptions that allowed us to make changes, like for example, through our flexible spending.
The last time was changed in 2015? So 10 days is fine. You don't want more or less. That works without changing the cadence of your. Is there any board, committee member discussion or questions for staff?
I don't have any, Julia. I don't either.
None.
Director Green, you want to move that we recommend to the whole board?
Yeah, I'd like to make a question that we move this to a vote.
Oh, Herman!
And so just to be clear, this is so handy that we have the Chair of the Board here. Because this, in order for us to meet the staff's deadline, this needs to be on the next board meeting agenda and then the second reading in December and it would accomplish the objectives that staff, that staff needs and raise at the day. Is that right? And then provide a lot more flexibility going forward and get rid of 50 pages of the policy manual.
Okay, and I'm in favor of putting it on. That would be this Tuesday.
Yes.
And then we would follow up after, process wise, after a comment period for a second reading or?
Yes, because we'd be removing something and replacing it. So we're amending the policy and so we'd come back at the December meeting, which and have the second reading and adoption in theory of the
In time for the end of the benefit year.
They can make the change in time. And it would set us up for the future that we wouldn't be in this position ever again.
If Sharon says it's great, I believe her. Thank you. We'll make sure, we'll make sure that that gets on the agenda for the coming meeting.
Okay.
Does this give us enough time to make sure that all the board members get to, like, get to see the information, read through it and figure out if they got any questions about before?
Yeah, so I'm going to send something out because like I say, I just found out about it last Tuesday. It wasn't something that was anticipated. But we'll send something out so that people can take a look at it. And raise issues at the first reading. And we also have another committee meeting in the intervening time, so if people wanted to make some sort of amendment.
So the hope is that we would have any substantive changes to restart the first one. To meet the goal.
Right. Just five, send, send something out.
And, and just for prioritization, I would say, you know, don't read through the 50 pages.
Yeah.
But rather, take a look at the staff recommendation. Yeah, so don't read through the whole document because we're trying to rescind.
Rescind and replace.
Rescind and replace. Thank you.
Committee members, everyone in favor of recommending the amendment to the?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Lowry?
Yes, sorry. Can't find my note button.
Your page?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody, and I appreciate the greatness of still allowing that to be added to the agenda. We are going to go back to the the climate policy. And at the last meeting, just as a way to reframe things up, there's been, I don't know, six or seven months of policy development by the 2021 for lots of discussions, draft, you know, we're on a draft 24. Sheen Smith ran a community engagement process and reported last committee meeting on the the findings and that's, I think, was posted. And so at the last meeting, we, we set up a process by which individuals who had, committee members who had changes they wanted to propose could a deadline that they would provide their comments by. And then a staff deadline for comments on the comments, is that?
So sure.
Comments on the comments. And then we were going to come back today and have a sort of final discussion. And I think it's fair to say, if you've seen the documents, you'll realize that we are not going to get, have a final recommendation today to, at least that's my assessment and but maybe people might have a different assessment, but then we're not going to get to a final document to recommend to to the board yet because in, in addition to the staff comments on the comments and assessment, we also, there was a discussion with superintendent and subsequently with staff on Friday about you know, a different proposed structure and essentially currently we, this, the committee, this committee and its multi-year versions has focused on the policy primarily because that's the board's role and that not so much the AD because that's a staff role or the implementing plans because that's really the staff's role. And what was suggested, I'm going to have us at a certain, at a point here in the discussion to go through the staff recommendations, I would group them into like two main categories, well, three categories. One, just some substantive comments on the draft. And then second, there is, if you are looking at the document, there is one that's a version 24 and it has green, blue and red fonts on it and Sarah, I don't know if you can pull that up just so people have a sense of what it is, but at some point we'll want that pulled up.
Which, which one of the two lines are you?
Version, is it version 24?
Yes, I'll pull it up.
Um, let's actually, even if you don't pull it up because we're not going to.
We can pull it up, I just said, which one?
Okay. So essentially staff came back with three, three buckets in addition to some non-substantive and substantive wording changes throughout the document. But they, they put some items in red of the draft policy and those are ones that staff is recommending remove altogether. There is green text, there's not that much of that, but that is remain a policy and as a blue, it says move to policy, move from policy to the administrative directive or the implementation plan. And yeah, I have mixed I have mixed feelings about it because we're so far down in the process and there's been lots of community conversations and there's also been community engagement around the policy. However, I think we should have the discussion and see if, you know, from a committee's perspective, what, what we think is important, let's stay in the policy. If we agree about removal of some items and then third, if some items are going to move from the policy to AD. And so I'm sorry that this is a really long frame up, but if you look at the documents, we, it's, it's not a complicated exercise, it's not a simple exercise to just get from A to B, which is what we had kind of outlined last time. And from my perspective, if at this stage, after seven months, that we move things from a policy with understanding it's going to be AD is that the, I think the AD needs to work with it, otherwise it's not really in the AD. So that is the frame up. And I've thought a lot about what, what the right order is because we have conflicting versions and then a version that actually makes some, potentially some super substantive changes. I think the best thing to do is, the most important items, Dan, that were commented on, that yeah, use your judgment on, like what, what's most important or, and if you, if you agreed with the comment, like, let's just dispense with that really quickly and because if staff agreed with the comment, then we're.
Would it be helpful if I walked through real quick some of like the rationale for why the proposed change?
Why don't we wait till we get to that proposed change? Because I'd rather like get your, the.
Do the homework first.
Do the homework first because that's what everybody until last Friday, myself included, thought the exercise is going to be. So I think people provided input and it'd be good to hear. So the document you're referring to, you're now referring to, Dan, is?
It's a memo and the subject is climate crisis, crisis response, policy staff into a new proposal. And so this is the, the comment on the comments and the staff homework and we're happy to walk through some of that. You walk through each one and again, the ones that staff agrees with the comments. And for that, I will ask Aaron Pressburg, our team from your manager of Catability, if he wants to.
Dan, so just for a high level context, the way we structured this memo was to leave any text that's in black is current policy before any text that's in red was part of the public comment of the proposed changes that we were asked to give in. So Karen, are you going to share this? Does everyone have access to it? So the first one that we're going to go over is the emission reduction. So previously we had written in there that we would reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030 and then going net zero by 2050. The comment now is to move that timeline up to 2040 for the net zero target. So we agree with it in principle, but we just wanted to kind of highlight some of the barriers that we might find. So most notably, moving up the timeline does not necessarily mean that we can control how fast we implement the work. So we're a little bit concerned that due to different barriers such as construction capacity in the industry or funding or our ability to continue to pass voter approved bonds to implement the work, there's a lot of barriers and a lot of, a lot of dominoes that need to fall in order for us to, to reach this goal. I'm not saying it's impossible, but it's, it's going to be extremely difficult unless we can secure more bond funding and we can make sure that the construction industry continues to boom and we can leverage that in order to make all the necessary improvements. Most notably, we're building electrification, so converting all of our HVAC systems to electric fuel instead of natural gas fired. And then of course converting all of our fleet, not just transportation, but all of our nutrition services and maintenance fleet to electric vehicles as well. So serious cost implications, serious timeline and schedule implications, but it can theoretically be done if the right pieces are in place. Now, for the actual recommendation, we, we discussed, you know, we got a lot of feedback through public comment that we didn't want to invest in carbon offsets, which I agree with. And I think that it's going to be very difficult to meet the 2040 goal without having that option to invest in carbon offsets. So my recommendation or staff recommendation would be to keep it even at 2050 without carbon offsets or moving up to 2040 with the option to make up the difference in current investments in carbon offsets.
Go ahead and ask questions. Any, any questions on the 20th board?
Are there any implications if we don't do this by 2040?
I don't know if that's a question I can answer. I don't know. I mean, not like now, but it's, you know.
I, I would love to take a stab at answering that. I think was the question, what are the implications if we don't do this by 2040?
Yeah.
So in climate circles, 2040 is a year in which two really large things happen. One is which, in the United States, we move from white majority to a majority of people of color based on census data. And the other thing is that it's projected that if we don't meet carbon, carbon emissions goals by 2040 that we have like, the, the time on the planet becomes even shorter if we haven't met goals, established goals and met goals by that, by that date. It, it just means the clock is running down from that date quicker than it is today. In lay terms and so a lot of climate policy globally is, is kind of focused on 2040, the years 2040 and then 2050. Or even 2030 and those are, large institutions are grappling with this and even, you know, in Glasgow, the meeting, the meetings over the last few days about climate policy are showing that there's a, there's an urgency to, to get this addressed as soon as possible. And I also heard a co, a comment about should we pay for carbon offsets and I would say our money would be better spent rather than paying for offsets for our operations in, 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 in investing in the infrastructure required to reduce those emissions rather than the carbon emissions, putting off that payment to others or, or just paying for, for, for for carbon emission activities would be better for us to invest as an organization in mitigating strategies rather than paying for bad behavior, if that makes sense.
Director DePass, if I may, I think, you know, how to your question around how it might impact school specifically, I, I would argue and I would say that the previous experiences and previous history in this organization leads us to, to know that unrealistic expectations, you know, create a lot of political noise and we want to be thoughtful about how we have conversations that are important to the community that addressing these issues with realistic understanding of, of what's in front of us. So what you're hearing from staff, you know, is this, this desire to accelerate and move forward, you know, towards these, these very important goals. But it's also making sure that we understand that as a system, there are systems upon systems upon systems that need to all fall into place in order for, and so if, and so if we don't account for those and we, we still accelerate, you know, we, we put up a 2040 timeline in this example, you know, and we don't get there, what is, what is the pushback, the unrealistic pushback that you start hearing when you start creating unrealistic expectations in the community?
Yeah, it makes, it makes perfect sense. We can, we need to both support, you know, the most aggressive, you know, climate mitigation strategy and we need to keep in mind, you know, the impact financial, operational, the, the impacts to the organization as well. There's a, there's a cost for, for everything, not even just financial. So I, I appreciate you, I mean, the reason I'm advocating for even keeping this policy in this committee for longer is that it's really important to get this right. There is going to be a tension between like, what can we afford? What can we actually do? What do we have the staff to do? And, and what are our lofty goals? We need to hold both of those truths together and, and in the same bucket. So I appreciate hearing, I, I appreciate the, the feedback because I think it'll make the policy stronger in the long run. I appreciate the the feedback because I think it'll make the policy stronger in the long run.
I would say the other thing is if we haven't oversigned the level and after the initial benchmarking happens and the staff does their implementing plans, we'll have a sense about whether we can we can hit that. And so there's a lot of time, it's not going to be in 2039, we're going to be like, hey, Dan, how are you doing on that? And if you didn't do it, like, like, there's going to be some punishment. I mean, I think we'll be able to track it. But also, I think the other thing that we can't anticipate is like, I think it's really important that we also cut out that. This is all reliant on passing more bonds. Because we're not going to get there on schools we have. So that's an important conversation with community. It's like, hey, you have to do your part too. But the other thing is that because of what's happening around the world, like the technological innovations that are that are happening and the innovations just around infrastructure, is that right now there's not a electric box solution that's viable and affordable. But like the whole world's working on stuff like this. So I do think there are things that we don't anticipate that I totally agree with Director DePass. Don't waste money on offsets. This isn't a greenwashing thing. But we, if we don't put that out there and really press hard, I don't think we can get engaged in the same conversation that if we like, say, we have to 2050 and then we, you know, use carbon offsets. So I I actually like staff putting in that here all the things that need to happen for us to to meet that. And it's aggressive and so people know that. So we don't have false expectations. But also, we're really clear, like, hey, we're going to need voters to pass bonds for the next, you know, 20 20 years. Because that's how we get 100 years' goals for sustainable.
I want to add just a couple of comments. And one is that one of the ways, one of the ways we could invest, we could consider investing is in developing the in-house capacity to measure and monitor climate emissions. And there's plenty of systems out there to do that and and training. And the other thing is we could look at innovative financing packages, which, for instance, the University of British Columbia Bank in Victoria in Victoria, I'm sorry, had a fantastic deal with, I think, McKinstry and an HVAC contractor where they looked at a 20-year financing tool, which the investments were kind of given to the university upfront. And they, the university had a 20-year plan to pay off those investments based on like 50% of what the saving, what the financial savings were in energy costs. I'm not explaining that very well. There's a very large upfront investment to the University of British Columbia in which they paid off or still paying off currently this 20-year plan that gives them a reasonable way to pay that those investments off by signing over 50% of what the energy costs would be with the difference between the delta between what you pay in energy costs without the improvements and what you pay with the improvements in solar and renewable energy. It's a really, it's a great financial tool to look into and it works for organizations, at least campus wide, if not scattered site.
So 2040, your language would be 2050 without carbon offsets.
That's the suggestion, I think.
Yeah. Yeah. And like I said, I agree with Director DePass about the carbon offsets. But I'm not anticipating next year, we're going to start buying carbon offsets because next year is just 2023.
If I had a voice and it's me, I appreciate like, like you're saying, I appreciate all the information that was laid out. This is what it's going to take. This is what it's going to look like. This is what we need to do. And then with that, I would still say we make the goal. And then we set milestone markers along the way. We go for it and use, these are all the things that we need to do to get done. Set milestone markers along the way of how we're getting there and then reassess at another time. But don't play it safe. I mean, to me to say, let's no, let's extend it by by 10 years because, you know, that gives us more of a chance. Or we could say, push ourselves and run this thing into the ground. And we're going to use this as the, we're going to use this as our our mantra. We're going to stand up on the top of every flagship and we're going to say, we're going to get there by 2040. This is how we're going to do it. And in order to do that, it's going to take this, this and this and this. And you know, we can't do this by ourselves. We need every one of y'all chipping in and push it back to the community, say, help us reach our goal. Because if we're going to do it, we're going to, it's going to take everybody. But I don't believe in the scarcity mindset. I just don't. It's I believe in abundance. There's there's abundance out there. And if we want it, we just got to, we just got to go for it. So I'm saying, push ourselves and run it until the engine explodes. Watch it blow up.
If you're on the board in 2040.
Preach.
Do not make reach these goals.
We can know with 2030.
What is your response to the community?
So at 2030, my response would have happened in 2030, actually. Because if we're setting milestone markers along the way and I'm on the board, then I know based on the milestone markers of that we've set where I need to be. So I'm going to reverse engineer it like project management does, using a Gantt chart. A Gantt chart. In order to do this, we have to have this, this, this and this in place by then. So I know at this date, either we're on target or we're not. So at that point, I can already start saying, look, we were, we're supposed to be here by now and we're not. So in order to meet this goal that we have in place, to get this ready by 2040, we have to expedite this, this and this. And so you technically are going to know that at 2030. You're definitely going to know it at 2035. So by the time 2040 gets there, because I'm so transparent with everything, I got on black underwear right now. That's how transparent I am. I believe on putting it all out there, let everybody know so that we all know where we're at. That way, I'm not trying to keep nothing from nobody and everybody understands this is what we're going to do to get there. This is what it's going to take. And I'm not doing it by myself because I'm constantly, every meeting, I'm going to come back to the committee or I'm going to come back to the community and say, all right, y'all, this is what we did this week. This is what we're planning to do next week and go that way. So by 2040, they already know.
Raise the second line segue.
So can I just one comment?
Okay, and then I'm going to segue to the next issue because we have.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So I appreciate the kind of the the parallel, the comparison to project management. And I hear, I hear what you're saying. I think the challenge here in, you know, as a as a project manager, one of the things that you always think about, you know, are is the pyramid, right? I think the difference here is a little bit that that we have forces that are outside of our control.
Correct.
Like beyond of what a project manager does, right? A project manager really has a scope that we can understand. Here, we're dealing with federal regulations, state regulations, lack of funding, you know, you name the issue, right? And so what we're suggesting as staff is that we're not trying to, you know, and I'm the first one to say, let's go bold, let's go big, let's go. I mean, that's been my my position from day one. But we also have to be realistic. And and, you know, what staff is suggesting is we are looking at the different scenarios and the different, you know, strategies in front of us. And it's going to take more robust things. Now, it doesn't mean we can't accelerate, right? But that's going to take, you know, elected officials like you going to the feds, going to the state and pushing pushing the envelope, right? So I just, I think it's, so I hear your, I agree with you. I think it's just a little bit more, a different type of impact here.
I wonder if I have the medium, sorry, just one last thing. Is if we could say 2040 for everything besides transportation? Because I kind of feel like transportation, we're just not there. We don't know by 2040. So I'm wondering if, it seems like most other things we can't get to know by 2040. Could we say 2040 for everything besides transportation since then?
It's possible. I mean, a lot of these questions are going to be answered once we get our baseline data and we look at the whole picture. I know that our building energy is our biggest emitter, transportation's number two. There's barriers to both, to be honest. And the cost. You know, for transportation, it's more of a cost barrier for for construction and building. Energy use, it's more, it's cost also, but it's also disruption to school activities and school here, you know. So there's there's construction impacts that are going to impact the school day. We have to take into account too. So I wouldn't say that one is easier than the other to me.
I am, I am like slightly curious about the, you know, because you said disruptions to like schools and stuff like that. But like addressing the urgency because like, you know, we don't meet this. Like imagine like when the next board is going to have to do with like flooding and like, you know, I feel like, you know, that might be like down the line, it might be like more disruptive. Like our buildings are going to like have like water flooding into them.
Yeah, and I, Director DePass touched on that, like kind of more on the global urgency of the impacts of climate change, which of course we all agree with. I'm I'm more saying that the feasibility of actually getting the construction to work done is what I'm presenting right now. I agree with you on the science and 2040 should be the target. But I'm just talking about feasibility. Can we actually get the work done due to funding, construction capacity and everything else that needs to be done?
So even if the the goal is still set to 2050, is staff willing that they can reach that goal? Like 100%?
There's going to be, it's going to be tough to recycle too, I would think. I mean, it's it's hard to say because who knows what's, you know, what the industry is going to be like at that time or as we approach that date. Either way, it's going to be tough, but I know for a fact that 2040 is going to be tough.
May I offer a comment? And that's that we were just kind of socialized to our long range facilities plan last night. And in there is a facilities condition report. And there's also a ranking of buildings that need help, you know, sooner than others. We we're going to build to the whatever the the building code is, the Oregon Energy Code, the Oregon Building Code standards, which are 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 strong. And and we could also, like in the case of the Kellogg Middle School, we could also say, you know, we like that energy code and we're going to up it a little bit. We're going to exceed the standard. The building code is a floor that you need to meet. And so I'm wondering if in this policy, we can offer ourselves some flexibility. Well, this is assuming any improvements we do to the shell of a building would be done to the code, right? So if we're replacing a window, we're not going to replace it with a single pane window. We're going to replace it with a double pane R value, U value window that meets or exceeds the building code. And the same thing for for roofing and for insulation and any shell improvements. And so I'm wondering if we can, you know, rather than kind of discussing the merits of like when this has to happen, if we can make it a goal that we exceed the Oregon Energy Code, for instance, by, you know, as much as we can. As someone earlier mentioned, the technology, for instance, in battery storage for solar panel, which is emerging. And some of these other, you know, emerging technologies in compressed compressed air systems and heating and ventilating systems, like the technologies happening right now. That's what we're teaching in engineering schools. And so I'm wondering if we can build in some type of a flexibility that is attentive to cost, but also says we commit to exceeding, you know, the floor that's expected of us, you know, anybody that does any building in Oregon.
Director DePass, I would like to have, I would ask you to hold that thought till we get to the substance of the policy. Because I don't think it's in conflict with taking a date. And then there's a lot of strategies underneath or goals or directions that we can set. So I would ask you to hold that as when we get to that point of the discussion. If that's, that works. I, what I hear from, I think from the committee is a 2040, but to be very absolutely clear that there are things that need to happen in order for us to be able to make that and that it's a stretch goal. And I would say to staff that once the that initial assessment is done, then you can come, you can always come back because that's that's the conversation with the community that should happen. It's like, this is our, you know, our target right now. And if you guys get more information or here's some other contingencies that are required, you know, I think that's a great conversation that to have. But I would say what I think I'm hearing is the 2040. And with all your contingencies and sort of the criteria, what needs to happen in order to even have the possibility of it going on. Well, I can be very disciplined to like never end the sentence just 2040. We end it with a if these things happen. Then the next item, and this gets into, I think, Director Green's comments about the transparency in the whole community. Do you want to share the next comment?
I will turn it over to Aaron again.
Yeah, so this comment was, the second one is about establishing the committee. I don't know if Liz, you want to weigh in on this one too? But there were really no notes on it. We just drafted some language, you know, and staff recommendation.
I think it was to give kind of a parallel structure to some existing board appointed committees that have defined number of representatives that are appointed by the board that have, there's a reporting cadence to the board. So I think it was just, we looked at some other parallel structures within the district.
So this is very similar to the bond accountability committee.
And C or is that? CBRC, is it similar to that?
It's similar. I think the bond accountability committee is what we looked at most.
So my, and I'm interested in Director Lowry's comment on this because you you provided some language which I appreciate by the deadline. So I'd be interested in your thoughts, Director Lowry. My only comment would be 9% is like a right on the nose. I would have something like 8 to 10 or just flexibility. Director Lowry, do you have a thoughts on the on the committee?
I first appreciate, Julia, you acknowledging that I met the deadline for the due date. We all know how obsessed I am with getting. I, I was once, I once took a personality test that said that I have a tendency to be an overpromiser, underdeliverer. So when I say something that I'll do something, it's really important to me that I actually follow through and do it. It's one of my like life goals. So that would be my obsession with getting stuff done by the deadline because I don't want to ever overpromise and underdeliver. So now you all have some psychological work on me. So you understand my crazy a little bit better. I think that the, I agree with Director Brim Edwards, 8 to 10% sort of range there is helpful. I think that, you know, the goal of this was that this was, I think, the, this committee was something that the folks who brought forward this policy wanted and that we have taken out at points during the iteration of this policy. And that I really wanted us to make sure that this committee very, very much reflects the frontline impact communities. And that we're again, once again, really centering the racial equity, social justice values of this policy and of our district. So I feel like I I'm fine with that and this sense of rhythm. I really appreciate looking at our CBRC. I think it would be really helpful to say PBS will establish a nine-person committee. You know, that is that the language, Liz, we use for CBRC or the bond accountability? Or is it the board will establish? That would be my question, that this is a board committee that is advising the board? And how do we make that clear in this language?
The intent is to make clear that it's a board established and board appointed committee. And I can't remember exactly how this compares to the BAC language, but the intent was that it was similar to that. I think one of the things it does, that this does, that Julia suggested outside of this meeting to me was that it's a no more than 10, and I agree with her suggestion.
Can we each then appoint like 1.5 people?
No, I mean, no, it's the whole board. It's like CBRC, Michelle, where people would apply and then the board would appoint them. Or the same with the bond accountability committee. But I would, I would say, can we change it instead of PBS will establish a nine-person committee? Could we say the board will establish, just to make clear that that this is, this is on. And I think it's really important to make sure that we're in this conversation about what goes in the policy and what goes in the administrative directive, right? And how that relationship happens in a healthy, transparent way.
I think that's a healthy and better amendment. I think it should say the board and I think there's no question it belongs in the policy.
Any issues with, well, either the underlying recommendation or the the change from? Um, recommendation or the um, the, the change from the nine person to no more than ten and then making clear it's the board?
Yeah, I had one thing in mind, I would rather have like a lower limit, so we don't have like less than a certain amount of people, I think it's okay to have more. People rather than less than what we want.
Well, here's the great thing, if it's a board appointed committee, like we can, we can control that. Um, so if there were only three people on it, it's like, it's the board's responsibility to go get um more members. So I, I, I don't know that that's necess- necessary, um.
I, I also think that too many people makes it really hard to be functional, there's a point where you get diminishing returns for too many people on a committee like this, so I'd be. I would, I would actually be fine sticking with nine, actually, um, because then we, with five members who identify as people of color. Um, I, I'd be okay with leaving it at nine, but I think that, I don't think we need a minimum.
I'd be fine with nine too, because I think having five, the thought was to keep a majority of people of color, right?
Okay, um.
That's, that was my, my question, are we making?
Correct.
I'm because we, and we want, um, the five is because we're wanting to make sure that the um, the people of color, the BIPOC community is the majority. And so then with that though, I want to um, I wanna make sure that we don't, we're not so quick to get it, that we, the, it says two. That two of the voices have to be students, right? So can we, can we make sure, because I don't want of the five for two to be students, I want there to be five. Then the two students, that we have two students, so that way we know we're not losing, because I don't want you to say we captured five and two of them are students. And then all of a sudden, students, they change schools, they move town, parents move, or whatever the case might be, and now we've only got three. So that's what I was thinking, but I, I like the language.
No, two, two firsts.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want no two, but I, I do like the language though, I think that was a good.
Um, does anybody have an issue with that?
I, I just think you need to be clear about whether that's nine or eleven, because five of nine plus two students is eleven, so I just, I.
Yeah, I, I think we need to leave it, I think we need to leave it at nine, and I, um, Director Green, I hear your point. And then it's incumbent on the board to replace those students, you know, with students to make sure we're still at our five. And, and we do the, a very similar thing with C B R C, where we have people go off, we have students go off, and then we replace folks on that committee.
Students and then two that.
So this is the great thing, if it doesn't happen, uh, Director Green, it's on the board. So we, we have the ability to control what you.
I, I like it, I don't got a problem with that.
Okay, so we're gonna go with no more than nine and change it to the board.
Is it no more than nine or?
Well, okay, so sometimes you have somebody resign and like it takes a cycle to get them reappointed, I mean, I just. I think that's the, the goal is nine, but you might have just transitions, people.
Life transitions.
Yeah.
The life transitions. So if you say no more than nine, then it gives us the ability to keep me, to keep going and not be out of compliance.
Okay.
If you say nine, you get eight.
And then in this part, um, what do we, like, what, what do we establish as uh frontline community members?
Well, I said frontline community members, but what the policy actually says is people of color.
I'm in favor of using frontline communities and like trying to reduce the use of people of color, just for best practices, it's better to kind of name. The communities, um, but I like, I like the frontline communities, because I think it's understood that those frontline communities are, are from BIPOC communities.
And I think what you may be asking is like some sort of definition, so we can, since we're not moving at this meeting, we can um respond to that, so.
Yeah, because we also use frontline communities on the way, other places in the.
Only frontline, because I work in private policy and sometimes we will like prefer to those as people who like. They like lose their houses, their homes are more affected by um, the climate crisis, which isn't always people of color, but majority is, but some. But like in a racial equity standpoint, it is people of color, so that's fine, that's fine.
Um, I'm gonna ask staff any definitions to somehow work on other, or come back.
I think we need guidance about which you want, so those are two pages articulated the difference, and so we'll need some guidance from the committee about which definition we want.
I would like um Danny, you to work with another committee member. And Liz on the definition, that's okay, I think it's a great call out, it's like, who do we need? Um, but I also don't wanna be here in this meeting, so let's, because we, because we have a chance to, we have a chance to come back.
Yes.
So the next um item, Dan, was the scope.
Yep, that's easy one, scope one and scope two, the intention of the language, what, when you said scope two was to scope one, so staff, I agree with that one. We do that one, Erin, let me know if I missed something.
I also wanted to, um, one of the revisions or the suggestions I made was to clarify what scope one and scope two means and draw a reference point to the E P A guidelines. So scope one are things that are direct things an organization can influence, and then scope two are things that um are. Are, are outside, are outside of the direct control, so that would be the purchase of energy, for instance, or fuel.
Could this be another definition?
Yes, another definitions note, thank you.
It could be added to a glossary if we put together a glossary of definitions, for instance.
Yep. Dan, do you want to go to the next one?
Sure, one point, two point two, Erin, do you wanna talk through this one, do you need some help?
I used to get one.
Oh, did I?
Yeah, one point four.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the red language was added to the maximum extent feasible, uh, minimize indirect use of fossil fuels. So we support their team direction, uh, a little bit concerned about the language, because it's a little bit vague and it might cause a. You know, trade off in cost, so we, we recommend that we leave out that language, believe it as is. So then it would just stay as the energy efficiency and minimize the indirect use of fossil fuels.
So I think you're fine about the cost, but increased energy efficiencies, that could mean like, you know, one till an hour, like, hey, you did it. Because I'm, I'm thinking about almost everything we do, we assess cost trade offs, and it, it doesn't say. And I guess, to me, the qualifier was feasible. And that, so, so to me, that was the, yeah, well, if it's not feasible, we don't do that in process of feasible, for me, a feasibility factor, um.
It may be to define feasible in the definition section to the task, so it's clear.
Yeah, you could, good, well feasible or um. Yeah, somehow, I think some sort of cost standard.
Yeah, I think the concern was, okay, if we define, what is the, what is maximum extent feasible mean, and what kind of trade offs are we expecting to make because of that language? For instance, do we spend more money on energy efficiency projects and take money away from uh education or some, some other department? Those are kind of the main concerns.
So I don't see the board's role as making that call through, so after the staff does the assessment. And then comes up with this implementation plans, it could be, we dialed up, you know, this thing over here. And we're doing less of this over here, because that still gets us to twenty forty. Um, if this said, get rid of all of it. Or maximize it uh without respecting anything else, to me, that'd be a different thing, because to me, this is giving staff the flexibility that. Even dial this one up first.
I, I think just the, the staff concern is because the language is vague, it's open for interpretation. So does someone then come in, was like cold and read this and say, well, if you're not choosing to always select the most energy efficient unit. Regardless of anything else, then you are not maximizing what you can. Or if you are not using all of your general fund, uh, ordinary maintenance repair. Possible funds on energy savings, and you're sitting on something else, well, it's feasible that you could have made those trade offs. And so I think it's really just an interpretation of one of those, one of the languages.
Take out maximum.
To the extent feasible.
I like that.
Um, because we're, we're, we want the same thing, and we're, we're arguing over, well, I shouldn't even say we're arguing, because this is not arguing, I've been in arguing. This is definitely not fun. But we're, we're, we're discussing like, you know, perception. You're, 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 because your, your response is someone may perceive. That we should be doing more, someone may perceive that we're not doing enough. I can guarantee you without question, without question, a hundred percent, and I'm a hundred percent certain on this, and I'm never a hundred percent certain on anything. That no matter what we do, right, wrong, or indifferent, somebody is going to perceive that we're not doing enough. Or, and somebody else is gonna perceive that we're doing too little, so we're never gonna win. So I don't think it's gonna matter, to me, if we just take out, if you feel comfortable, you're happy, then we just take out maximum.
I'm not sure I know the difference between feasible and maximum extent feasible.
To me, to the extent feasible says, because we're not telling you how to spend the money, that's, that's what I'm here live clear. We're not saying, I want you to go out and I want you to buy this, and I want you to buy the, the most cost effective, energy efficient A C unit. That our money can buy, and I don't care who you take from to get it, just give me the A C unit, so that I can be, and then go out and buy all solar panels. We're not telling you that, feasible says, it's your job to look at the budget and to know where we gotta spend stuff and how stuff is going to go and where we need. I need you, I need to know that you have in mind to the extent feasible, that we're going to be considering the climate. And the role that we're playing in getting there by twenty forty and all those budget making decisions. And to the extent feasible, you're going to ensure that we're, we're doing that, so when I say the extent feasible, that's what I mean. When, to me, if I say to the maximum extent feasible, then all I'm saying is, you're really going to be looking at this. And the best that we can do, you're gonna give us the best that we can do, I'm not gonna be coming back to you, and I know that these meetings get recorded, so I'm on record right now. As saying that, I didn't say that, but to the, to the maximum extent feasible, did you do it? And then if you tell me yes, then it's a yes, you know, why is it yes? Because you told me it was a yes, and I trust that you're going to do your job, that's why you're here. So to, if you don't like maximum, I'll say fine, let's take out maximum, to the extent feasible, I feel like, I don't see, I don't see it.
You can define, I'm fine with defining feasible, to me, it.
Yeah.
I know what I see it, um.
And the definitions, they're already hit the road with this board appointed committee, going to. Report to the board on how staff and how the district is meeting these goals, so. As long as their interpretation and the understanding that they are clear feasible means that aligns with what the intent is, I think it is, is where.
I'm actually, I'm curious, you know, and, and I'm gonna bring in uh our auditor, uh, who's behind you. Because I'm actually, and, and sorry to bring you into the conversation, but I'm actually curious, from your perspective. If, if, if you were to looking at this policy as is with the word feasible, and you, you were to do an audit of. Decision, again, you probably don't know all the context here, but. What would your advice or recommendation or your thoughts be to the school board on the interpretation of that, that word feasible? From an implementation standpoint?
So thank you, um, Jonathan, for calling me out. You know, it, um, it actually would be helpful if you were a little bit more specific, like adding those definitions. Like if you were to define feasible, then that would be, I always think about policies from their purview. If at one, some point I need to audit this, what am I gonna audit to, what's the expectation? And for me, to the maximum extent feasible is very big, would be extremely difficult to audit to. Um, I know not all policies should be designed to be audited with that as its sole intent, but it definitely would help to have. A definition or something very specific, and the maximum extent possible. Dan was saying like, that people are gonna say, you didn't use the maximum amount of funds, I can see that for some. So doing more definitions, we had a lot of that.
Appreciate that, I, I think that's helpful.
Um, so staff can propose a, a definition for feasible. And the other thing is, you could also just um put some sort of uh, within the class, within the district classroom strikes. The reality for me is like, I'm not gonna be asking which label do you bought, but like, are you on track to twenty forty? And what do you, what do you need from the district? Um, versus like, how are you doing, because there's not a sub like, how are you doing on each one of these towards the goal of twenty forty, it's like collectively. It's getting there, um, okay, let's go to the, the next one, and just to set the standard, we're gonna go for like fifteen more minutes. Then I'm gonna set a process for the next meeting that we're gonna have, if there's any public comment on this, um, and then we have a couple other agenda items. And I, I'm sorry, this wasn't the big uh move something out uh meeting, but there was um a request from staff that we. Uh, go in deeper and look at structure, and so I think that's the right, the right thing to do.
Okay, I'll just moving us along, one point, two point two, Erin, would you like that one as well?
Yeah, so, you still wanna do each one? Still gonna do each one, right? Um, so this one, one point, two point two, um, the added language was in red, such as standardized bins for recycling provided by the district. Um, so this is something we don't have currently, um, at least the front end or interior bins. It would require some substantial upfront cost to purchase the bins, district one, ongoing costs would not be large, um. We, we, it's gonna be a great measure as part of this policy, but we, we think it's a little bit too specific as far as policy language goes. Um, so we would recommend this would be more of an implementation plan or A D item.
Just the red language?
Yes. Because it calls on more of the specific measure.
I'm fine with that in the, having that in the A D. P V, P V S creates a lot of. Stuff and. Uh, as a city, we're, you know, moving towards no garbage, so to me, it seems like a natural process to do, but it is, to me, is a. It's a prescriptive action that's um.
We're moving towards what?
Pardon?
You said we're moving towards what?
Like getting rid of garbage, I mean, you know, it's like you have recycling, half of it's in, pardon, I'm sorry.
Did you mean to move it to the A D, that statement or that?
No, I'm, I'm just the whole statement, you know, it probably got the.
No, I'm just saying, as a city.
We ain't gonna have no garbage.
As a city, like every two weeks, you know, you, you have, you garbage finished once a week, so, or every other week.
They pick up my garbage every week.
May I speak to garbage for just a second? It's a, it's one of my favorite topics, it's like my second favorite talk to talk about, and I'm housed in the solid waste department um in my day job. And um mandatory composting uh for food scraps is coming. Um, for, for big producers, it'll be a lateral go out in the spring, but that's something that we should anticipate and we could actually get ahead of. Um, how to do that, and um, as, as you probably noticed, um. We need to reform the solid waste system for the city, I don't know if you've like noticed the sofas and beds and strollers and garbage, there's gar- garbage piling up. That process is happening, but what's, what, what's definitely gonna be coming down the pike is the food composting, and so I think it would be, behoove us to start to think about. What we can do in terms of where we place trash cans and some of those operational like low hanging fruit we can do. Um, because it's gonna be mandated, I believe in twenty twenty three, so. We have time to think about carefully how, you know, and where and staffing and where you put bins and kitchens, et cetera. Thank you for indulging me on my favorite second favorite.
I was like, write that down, we need to get ahead of things.
I'm in favor of this bit.
Composting is time.
The, the most exciting part of this is that one of our goals is also to create wealth generating opportunities for people that don't have opportunities. And so there's an opportunity to do um what's been done like in other cities where there are. And so there's an opportunity to do what's been done like in other cities where there are like black and brown worker owned co-ops that not just take the compost off site, they actually take the whole bin off the site and wash the bin out. So you always have a clean bin, so institutions like that, they like a clean bin that's, you know, picked up every other week or every week.
So I think what I hear is a lot of enthusiasm for the whole concept and that we're okay moving the standardized bins to in the AD because that is a, a way in which you can do it, that's very specific.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so next item?
One point, two point three, pursue zero waste strategies is added. Existing language was minimize disposable materials and fully utilize all materials before disposal. And then more language is added, a special effort to eliminate single use items in school cafeterias. I'm going to, I'm gonna ask for help here. All right, next one here with me, nutrition services, if she wants to add more comments next to her.
Sure, thanks, Erin. And so my recommendation for this piece was to change, eliminate, minimize. So while I would say like, our goal has always been to minimize the single use plastics across the, across the district. There are some infrastructure and facility constraints that we've been trying to tackle year, year after year. But there, I think that if you're looking at it from a whole district standpoint, there are some significant barriers with some of our facilities that don't include kitchens at all. And so that is one of the, one of the bigger barriers and doing it in a complete elimination across the district, you would see some schools without the ability to do that. So for example, I've noted, so applicable the upcoming current use of chowder, polygrout, these still, and then I'm currently working on information with Patrick and his team to try and make into a production kitchen. But we do have sites that we're utilizing that do not have kitchens, more of the dish washing capabilities that allow us to eliminate some of our waste practices. And the other piece of it is that there is some tie to, I know many of you have heard me saying, are familiar with how heavily federally regulated our program is. And so that's tied to some of our food purchases. We are exploring and advocating for different avenues. For example, just today, an opportunity to advocate for fashion move qualities. Materials are very specific and might be individual, single use items as opposed to a goal purchase. So it allows flexibility for us to head in the direction of our value a little bit easier, but some of those things will be. And so that was my recommendation for those, for those purposes specifically.
So I'm wondering, would you be comfortable with this language, including efforts to minimize some of these items in school cafeterias?
Yes.
So I'm curious, would anybody on the committee have an objection to that shift?
No.
No.
Director Lowry?
I couldn't find my phone to unmute, um, cause I'm wearing headphones. That's fine with me, sorry.
Okay, and I also think, I learned a lot when we had the students who came and presented. And then I got a super interesting email from Whitney about the, just the efforts that are being made and just like things we have to take into consideration, like kids throw away silver, like real silverware. And, you know, how we adapt to that. So it's, I totally get with the students like, hey, we wanna do something every day, well, we won't be throwing this away. And it's complicated. So if you could share that with the committee members, that it was just, it's a good background to keep in mind of like, hey, as we're trying to get to this goal, here's some things we have to keep in mind. Yeah. I know what that email you sent.
Yes, so and I think it ties into what Aaron was speaking to just earlier about when we roll out. Definitely having consistent bins and practices from school campus to school campus is, is really helpful. Because if, if they see something in their elementary setting that they can practice as a behavior and then build up into middle school and high school, it reemphasizes those behaviors. And we've been able to actually implement the district wide organic collection in all of our kitchens across the district. So we are in line with our food collections in the back of the house and the kitchen areas. And we're trying to find, I think, the information with Aaron's conference, how to get practice for that front of the house cafeteria practice that definitely takes a lot more effort. And that's to what Director remembers is speaking to, have a lot of efforts to try and make sure that students are aware of all the different separation of the bins. And some of the schools are really great at it, they can separate food waste, plastic waste, collect the blades, make sure they stack silverware into a different bin. And so you can understand that takes some kind of practice. But we also have to think about, if we don't have that practice and education for our students and the behavior created, we will see sometimes the plates and silverware, the real reusable ones, end up in the waste stream. And that is both costly from a financial standpoint as well as from an environmental standpoint. So we really wanna make sure we have that whole turn environment set up and student input into that process so that you can make sure that it's really well.
Okay, I think we're, thank you.
I can go back.
Have a center around to the other pool, so we can see some of the. So we'll go to the next.
Do the next one.
One point, four point three, and so this one has to do with transitioning all of our fleet to electric or low emissions vehicles. There was a comment added, we had a target date for this, twenty forty, twenty fifty, or twenty sixty. So, I don't know, Terry, if you wanna add to this, but I'll just start by saying, you know, this, this is more than just our school buses. We have, we have a hundred school buses that we own, the amount of cost to invest in EV is pretty, pretty high compared to a propane bus, so there's some cost barriers there. We also have to think about our nutrition services, fleet, security, maintenance, any other department that operates district. And it comes with infrastructure upgrades such as charging stations and that might trigger line extensions and electric service upgrades and that kind of infrastructure as well. So there's some downstream construction impacts that will be that will be, you know, considered into these, these transitions as well.
So do you have a date that you're proposing?
Um, yeah, Terry. In here.
Um, I think I'd put in there, we would struggle to meet a deadline of twenty to thirty years, especially due to cost. And one of the things that's unknown at this time is what the actual infrastructure of manufacturing of vehicles is going to be. Uh, we ordered our first electric vehicle last year and we're still waiting on delivery. We have no idea when it's gonna show up. So there's, there's those things, and as everyone's adopting these new goals, the demand for equipment is definitely going to make it hard to realize the supply. It's just hard to know where we're sitting at right now versus where we're gonna be in ten to twenty years. So setting a goal is great, as long as, I believe, as Director Ring was saying, continually assessing and reiterating those goals to know where we can actually get to.
So this may be another place where we wanna add language in, like just so that, what the, what the challenges are of the current technology and infrastructure. I guess there's two ways to do it, you could either qualify it with, you know, like, just the technology, infrastructure and budget. You know, as that's available, transition and then the rest of the statement. Or you can pick another date. I, I thought, cause the language here said, had some alternative dates. You guys wanted a date, but you also could modify it in some other way. This isn't a gotcha exercise, but this is a, we need to be heading in this direction, I mean, every.
I like the idea that, that Jackson sort of brought up earlier about the, from a facilities perspective, we're talking twenty forty, but from a transportation perspective, we might be talking a different time. Because, because specifically of that, that issue, electric vehicles, they're not cheap. And, you know, it's, it's, it's harder to justify wanting to buy a Tesla. Yeah, that's, that's, that's hard to justify, I need to get me a Tesla because I wanna save the environment. Well, I could go down here and get this used car last summer, we ain't got money for a Tesla like that. My family is not letting me have one as much as I like to get one. But we just don't have the money. So I like the idea of saying, but from a facility perspective, we got this goal, twenty forty. From a transportation issue because of the different things, it might be, you know, I think you were putting there twenty sixty already. I mean, that might be extreme, but you know what I mean, just, we need to give ourselves, we definitely need to give ourselves some leeway when it comes to the transportation.
Yeah, exactly. So this staff recommendation, it says fifty percent by twenty forty, so twenty sixty, twenty seventy, but for a hundred percent? That's kind of just like, open by then, I guess, and we can reassess and come back, but you'll be on the board.
Yeah, and I think there's still quite a bit of research that needs to be done in regards, because it's, it's still relatively new technology when it comes to school buses.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm not, but my kid loves.
Okay, so from a timing standpoint, I would like either qualifiers or a date. And it doesn't, to me, I think you can, I think you can get there either way. And I keep hearing widespread acknowledgement that, like, this is a big challenge. But it's also, you know, an important emission source, so so I'd like staff to come back with either like qualifiers or. And then, so I'm now gonna propose a process for the remaining items. So Director DePass, since you are a procurement or you have some sustainable procurement background, I'm gonna ask you to work with staff on the one point five one to see if there's, they're proposing completely eliminating it, I know you have some comments on this, so if you can work with Aaron and team on on that one, to see if we can come to some language that, I say, somewhere between the language and what, and the staff elimination language.
I would be happy to do that, but I'm very bad at procurement, so.
I thought you were the procurement person.
I'm just saying I did it, I'm not, I'm not good at it.
Promise that section, okay. Would somebody else wanna do that?
But I'm, I'm happy to, I mean, I, there, there's a landscape that I know that I can, I think I can push. I could, I can do the pushing in the right places.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip two point, one point four because I think that the comment was small. I'm sorry, Dan, I'm just gonna get through this. Two point two four, develop district wide plans for how to address natural disasters such as wildfires, flooding, drought, heat waves, extreme winter storms, extreme wind events and others. And staff is proposing cutting this, and one of the issues that I saw the comment like, is this, is this our mission? But this, this is what we've heard from our students and our communities. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to like, think of summarize what she's came back from your, your sessions. And this is sort of right in that wheelhouse. And so what the last thing I wanna do is go out and ask the community what you think, especially the impacted community, and then be like, well, we consider it, well, we took it out. So if we think this is somebody else's mission, but we know this is what our students care about, then what, like what role does it have? It doesn't mean we have to take it on, but it could mean that we, you know, partner with the city and the county or whosever mission it is to do something. But I would just be hesitant to just ignore the main comment we got back in the communication.
Is there ready for clarity, address? That the district should address something with that?
Because I'm working on moving things offline to the next meeting, what I would ask is for you and maybe Jackson and Danny to like talk about what that means. I say, I'm just not comfortable with a recommendation to the committee that we just take something out of the main comment we heard back. I'm also like recognizing we can't just add something to our, to our mission that we don't have, it's our core competency. So.
Okay, I think so. And Janice, would you, would you say that this like more reflects like kind of resilience being?
Uh, I, that's a good question. I, you know, from my perspective, from where I'm sitting, I think that there is a value in having this, this role and whoever does it, whoever the adult is, whether it's somebody in the system or someone we partner with, like the agency to be able to make sure that's, that piece is addressed. And I know we have been having a discussion on a couple of key points here. And there are these other bodies of work that are just as important to students and people in the community. And I'm not sure, you know, the, you know, walking into a classroom, that when students are telling, telling us goals, expectations that they need to see, that there, there is a specific meaning in mind, the board needs to do this. And so if there is a place where this limits for this to come true, to come to life, I think that would be a responsible kind of transition. And we are doing the work in this public meeting and through these documents to sort of work through and talk through that nuance and what we need to do to make this work possible and successful. And so I think there's an opportunity, as this work is continuous and ongoing, that we're not just gonna have a one and done conversation, you know, with students, that, you know, that this, this work is an over. And so there's an opportunity to continue it in more ways than one, and I think is important because the policy, once it's voted on, is kind of a done deal. But the, the real work is, is activists. And so that will be existing outside of the policy. So we can kind of figure out, you know, this, with the information we know now, how to illustrate that.
And Sheriff Remember, tonight, and you know, with my experience in, in previous, in other cities, all of these, these conversations, these plans are really an interagency endeavor, right? This is not, this is led by the county, the city, that, you know, because, you know, those are the first responders, those are the books that are really thinking through all of these plans. And we play a pivotal role, obviously, as a, as a school system. So I would, I would just want to make sure that we're clarifying what we mean by address it ahead of the campaign. So I just wanna make sure that.
And then maybe, it could be something like, support the county's work or the, you know, regional planning that work too. And then just sort of things else other than that. Sorry, I'd ask if you could try and come up with some language, if that works. That's a great point, Jonathan. Let's see. Three point two two, I'm gonna go really quick, quick steps. Our recommendation was to change all subjects to all students, unless anybody objects, I mean, just, because of that. Then three point two six, staff supports the addition of the language, so take that. Same thing with three point two seven, staff supports the language. And then the last one is three point three four. And there's a, this is a link related to whether we specifically call out school gardens. And staff has proposed an alternative language. Does anybody on the committee wanna work with staff on if we can come to an agreement? Or whether you wanna come to a agreement to accept the staff language? Who, who's interested in outdoor learning spaces and gardens?
I like outdoor.
Pardon?
I like outdoor rooms, this is our.
Okay, Jackson. So does everybody, everybody has like assignments for the next meeting? Given the time, I am gonna spend more time thinking about how we take today's work and then combine it with a recommend, a recommendation or proposal, I'd say a proposal from the staff on where things live. And for the next meeting, we come back and just work through that. So, and that, there may be some free work for committee members to be prepared to come in and. So, and that there may be some free work for committee members to be prepared to come in and, um, have a point of view on some things. Does that work for everybody?
Works for me.
Okay, um, was Kara or Roseanne, was there any public comment relating to climate?
Yes, you.
Pardon?
Yes, you, my president.
Who else would it be? So I don't have any detailed comments today, but I'll submit them in the meeting. I did want to mention the timing of the information provided today. More than 30 pages were posted a day before this meeting, and that's completely interesting. How can the public track progress given this approach? And how does this contribute to building community trust? Um, at a high level, I want to note four things. One is please listen to the community or ask some of their opinions. Speaking of them. Second point is yes, this will be expensive and it can be an unfunded mandate. And we shouldn't be considering it will be robbing dollars from the classroom and that just can't happen. And the point is the bottom program that will have to ramp up. The third point is the community expects more accountability measures in this policy and you're moving in the wrong direction. The fourth point is the community expects more specificity in the actual policy and you're heading in the wrong direction. The board has to leave and be bold. And then I'll just keep reminding people this, time is of the essence. We're two years into this process and we need to get this done. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else, Kara? Uh, thank you for coming up just stating the meeting. Is there anything else before we close out that policy? And again, I, um, appreciate everybody's flexibility and sort of the change and, and the conversation. Uh, Superintendent Guerrero, do you want, do you want to say anything before we close it out?
Uh, yes, just thank you. Um, I appreciate the full discussion and I know that we're going to continue, um, to develop this to be the kind of bold, uh, direction and policy that we want it to be. Um, so I appreciate that. I don't think I've heard anybody disagree on the objectives that, um, that we're discussing. Um, we just want to make sure that we're able to build a plan that's transparent and accountable and that we make actual progress in all of these different areas. So, uh, I do appreciate that. I think we share that, that objective, so thank you, everyone.
Well, we really appreciate, um, your personal engagement and the staff working with us to nail something that we've been actually river and.
I just want to say before, because they might leave, how much I appreciate all of the effort and intentionality that the staff has put into coming up with some, you know, some different therapies, working with what we have. I know a lot of times, um, we don't, you know, everybody wants to beat people up the moment something negative happens, but nobody writes that letter that said, you did a great job and I appreciate all the work. Um, and so I don't want to, I don't want this to be one of those, uh, moments where we don't acknowledge all of the hard work that went into it. All the reading that you had to do, all the processing, rethinking and going back and forth with one another. It does not mean that we always agree on everything, but the fact that you're taking that amount of time to really go through it tells me that you're concerned, you're just as concerned about this as, as all of us are. And that we all, we're all trying to get somewhere. So I want to take a moment, um, to make sure that you at least hear from us as a, as a team that I, we appreciate the work that, that went into this. So, so thank you to all of you.
Thank you for that reminder.
I, I appreciate your leading on that too, um, Director Green, um, and always for starting a love fest every time you open your mouth. Um, I also really appreciate staff. This is really important work for us as a district. It's really important work for us as Portlanders and it's important for us to, um, get it right, not, not, not get it done, but get it, get it right in a way that we can both, you know, address climate change and, uh, you know, consider the fiscal impacts of anything we do. And the, 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 the impacts to frontline communities and, you know, impacts to asthma rates and, and all of those things that, that we're going to see, um, that we see when we have inequities in our, in our climate response. So, um, I appreciate, um, those who came to testify today and staff as well. Just thank you for engaging so deeply in this really important work.
And Director Brim Edwards, um, I know last night we were interrupted to hear about the soccer victory. Uh, and so the reason I was 15 or 20 minutes late is because I was talking to all of our families in the vaccine line at Fabian. And so I just want to, quick commercial, we had, uh, I think over 200 students and their parents in line for vaccine shots tonight. So glad to report that, uh, our first day of clinic was a resounding success.
That's fantastic.
Awesome news.
Fantastic, thank you for sharing that. It's the best thing I've heard all day.
I thought we were going to get another sports score. Uh, but 200 vaccines is a great, uh, is a great number.
That's a great school.
The greatest thing was the children were just so excited to get a shot.
Um, so we have some other agenda items, I'm going to try and move through them. Um, I am going to move to agenda item number six because it's actually something we need to, um, have a recommendation from the committee on. Um, and this is, um, they're in your pocket, let's say it's agenda item number seven, and you should have three things which are, um, this is for policy 5.60, 0.10. Um, it's the administrative employees terms of employment policy. Um, at a board meeting, uh, this fall, uh, Director Scott, uh, moved a resolution that went to spend, um, three portions of the policy. Um, and one of them is already, um, in motion, so these are three areas the district was out of, um, out of compliance, sorry. And, um, so the first one was a vacation that's already moving. And then the second, the second one was section three, three A and C. And it had the board voting on the contract for administrators. And the historical purpose of that was that there had been, um, contracts that had terms of employment that were, had excessive benefits, um, or that weren't equitable among non-represented employees. Um, and, uh, a distinction that this amendment is being offered makes and which I think all board members, the 20 years since that was, that policy was approved. Is that it's the superintendent's choice of who the person is, of who gets, who gets hired, the appointment, the promotion. Um, it's not, when the board votes on it, the board's not voting on like, do we want that person or do we want somebody else? And, um, the, but that's not what the language said. Um, it could imply that the board like was making decisions on like who gets to be the principal of a high school or be in, in a particular, um, supervisory role. So, uh, what this does, this amendment does is it strikes the two sections which were suspended. And the two sections, um, that were suspended said, the board upon recommendation by the superintendent shall authorize the promotion of an existing employee or the hiring of a new employee into administrative position. That's A. And then C that says, you know, except as stated in this policy, no administrator should begin work for the district prior to the board approval of that employment contract. Section shall be approved by the superintendent. We're going to replace that with language that's very clear, but just says the super, it removes the board approving of the contract. And it says the superintendent shall have the authority to appoint, assign or alter the assignment of and to transfer any or all non-represented employees in accordance with the Oregon law, board policies and district administrative directives, except for the employees of the office of the independent performance auditors who are appointed by the board. So just making, making crystal clear that this is the superintendent's call. And he left us, or he's not.
And I appreciate that clarity.
So you're supportive of this amendment, is that?
Yes.
I see, I, I saw a thumbs up.
I was gonna say, note for the record, the thumbs up. Um, committee members, any questions or, um, comments on this?
I have none.
I, I just want to be really clear, Director Brim Edwards, that the, the concerns you raised about past history is very much distant past history. And that we're not talking about, um, shenanigans that happened under Superintendent Guerrero's watch.
Um, what I'm saying when not compliant is the board does not, has not been approving, like.
No, no, but you said earlier on that the reason this happened is because there were inappropriate packages given in the past. And so I just want to say that that was, that was not the recent past, that there were, um, questionable benefits given to employees.
That I, that I'm aware of, my, my reference was to, um, the previous 15 years that I'm aware of different things being put in administrative contracts that were.
Correct, correct. Yeah, but just that they were not during, I just, I just want us to be really clear about that because I don't want, um, that, um, statement to, to, uh, be construed as anything about the current administration.
Uh, this is an issue that came to, that, that night at the board member meeting about somehow this is specific to, um, a superintendent. And I think, having been somebody who has worked with 10 superintendents, um, since 1995, is that, um, absolutely this doesn't have anything to do with Superintendent, um, Guerrero at the time. We try and craft policies that, um, are timeless, that cross sort of staff transition, superintendent transitions. Um, so I am no make, and I, thank, thank you Director Brim for raising that because there was no intention to imply that, um, we needed, um, that there had been something that Superintendent Guerrero had done.
And I know you know that, I just want to make that crystal clear to folks, if anyone's actually listening to this policy committee meeting. Um, and when we say the things that happened in the past, you know, the past is a long time. So, um, just wanted to clarify that, but thank you Director Brim Edwards for shepherding this through.
Yeah, I mean, we have things from the interim superintendents that were here before, so I, 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 it's, it's not the way, way distant past, but certainly before, um, as Superintendent Guerrero.
So Guerrero, Sutek Guerrero has not broken any rules that we were of for the record. Um, since we're being recorded and we all just, let's just put on the table what we trying to say. If you are watching this video, the soup has not done anything wrong with this policy that we're aware of. Does that clear it up for you, Soup?
I, I, I love that you're making clear for our, our public, uh, for the families and community that there has been no unlawful behavior, uh, of this leader. Uh, I, it, it, the, the whole reason for looking at policies like this is we want to clean them up. We want to make sure they're, they're fair, consistent, standard and objective. Uh, they protect the board, they protect the district, they protect the superintendent, frankly.
Can we make a list?
Can we make a list of like annoying things the superintendent does though, like, you know?
That's a whole nother policy.
That's for next meeting.
Okay, um.
Thank you, Director Green.
Director Lowry. So the, um, I'm going to skip this round really quick because one thing I think we can, um, resolve. We have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six. We have seven policies out for public comment. Um, Kara or Roseanne, do we have any public comment that should be considered? No, I'm going to flag for the committee that, um, I have a number of information requests around the vacation policy that was changed in the last board meeting. And, um, you know, potentially might have amendments based on, um, based on that. So just heads up and I'll have, happy to share whatever information I have, uh, with, with other committee members and board members as well. Um, okay, the, I'm sorry, one other thing just I need to know, uh, just timing wise, um, do we have public comment, any other public comment at all? Okay, so the last agenda item, um, and thank you everybody for letting me sort of manage this as we go. Oh, no. Okay, I forgot to ask before we move off the, um, terms of employment for non-represented employees. For a motion, Director Green, that we, that we recommend the amendment to that policy to the board and.
I'd like to make that motion that we recommend that policy to the board with you.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, um, all those in favor of moving, uh, the policy to, um, the recommendation of the amendment to the full board for consideration? Say aye.
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 Okay, and you've got the student reps, uh, as well. So, um, Director DePass, if we could also have on the agenda, I think, and I'm just being cognizant of Director Lowry wanted to meet every deadline. I think in the policy, it gives us a, uh, coming back by January 1st. So if we have this on the, at the next board meeting, um, we could potentially have the second reading. There's not substantive public comment in December and we meet that deadline and Director Lowry.
Wins again.
So win again, she's been amazing, by the way, uh, beating everybody doing it first. So your life goals are in, in coming to fruition.
And really it's not about beating other people, although I do enjoy that. It's really about making sure I'm meeting the deadlines because I have a, you know, things can get away from me and then I feel like I've let folks down.
Yes, I have that same sense of competition. It's not so much with others as with trying to beat my own record, um, as an overachiever. So I completely understand that, but you have a really good track record so far.
So far. So far.
So that's noted, um, Director Brim Edwards, about that second item you like included on the, uh, on the next, uh, agenda.
Great, um, so I'm going to call people's attention to something that's in, that was in your materials. That, uh, we had a policy amendment to the civic use of buildings to say that title schools and CSI and TSI schools, um, would have, um, actually district paid for, had limited custodial services for events they had. Cause otherwise they couldn't have events. And so there's a report on that about the district sharing the information and then how many schools took advantage of that. So that was an update on just where we were with that. My only, I'm going to just put a question, I don't even answer now, but like, do we send a similar, a similar, um, a similar notice out this year and, you know, has anybody used it? But that was really to create some equity that you can have these, um, schools with, that can afford to pay for custodians or have millions of parents volunteers to clean up. But, um, other schools couldn't have school events or basically came out of the budget. So I hope people can look at that. And then the last item is, and we weren't going to vote on this, um, or move on it, but it is more of a discussion item, um, on the foundation policy. And, uh, I want to thank, uh, Chief Garcia, um, for the information. There's a lot of answers, um, to questions. I think Director Green, you asked who are the beneficiaries and in, um, and who used it, like who receives the money from the equity grants? And then also who raises the money? So, uh, I appreciate the detailed responses to the questions that got raised in committee about the foundations. So one, so there's going to be two things I'm going to ask if anybody has any questions about the answers that, um, Chief Garcia provided. And then also I had some questions a, as well about, um, how it's structured. So first I'm going to ask whether anybody has changes to, or, sorry, changes, any questions about the memo that was provided by Robin, um, about like what other districts do? I think you can see here that, um, most of them don't have fundraising for FTE or at Central. And then again links, um, Director Green, to who, who has been raising money, how has it been spent? A question I had about the, uh, if we're going to change the rules, what would be the least disruptive? And the answer was, and then we just will hear. Did anybody have questions about that set of information? Did anybody have questions about that set of information?
Director Brim? Go ahead, no, go ahead, a student was trying to speak.
My question was, I think Ailey was talking about like last meeting, just a general policy on fundraising from parents, just wondering if that's.
Yes, so I actually sent out to the policy committee meeting, but didn't include you, Jackson, or you, Danny, because I didn't, I intended to include Danny and was going to hunt down his email and I just totally forgot. So I apologize about that, but I will send it to Jackson and if you, Jackson, if you could give me Danny's email. I would actually request that we table the conversation around this policy and look at, I think that changing parents, school-based fundraising is going to take a lot of community engagement. And I think with things we're doing right now, including Southeast Guiding Coalition and COVID vaccine stuff, that this is not an emergency issue. And I would love for us to do a really good job around how do we deeply consider school-based fundraising as a global construct? Seattle has done some really amazing things. And I think there could be a really great opportunity to reform the foundations and look at all of it together. So I would love to, to say, can we, can we put a pause on this conversation for six months maybe and deal with some of those more emergent matters that are before us and then come back to this bigger conversation about local school-based fundraising and how especially we address it from an equity issue?
Yeah. The last meeting when this first came up, Director Lowry, you indicated that you wanted to bring a policy, a, a, a separate policy draft forward, which I'm, I'm open to. I'm not going to put a pause on this because actually I did try and, you know, focusing on the things that needed to happen most in this meeting, which were frankly, you know, something that the, the full board gave this committee, which was the terms, administrative terms of employment, something staff brought last week on the cafeteria plans, and then also pretty significant structural change. So I, I feel like I'm trying to manage the committee's agendas in a way in which taking into consideration things that need to happen or we've been asked to do. I also know that the community a year ago, or more than a year ago, raised this and it's an issue that's been raised in the community for 20 years. So I'm more than happy to have you bring something forward around the other issues, but I do want to continue to have the conversation. And I say, we're not acting on it today.
I want to jump in too. I am fully in support of pausing the, with pausing this work temporarily with a, with a hard due date because we're operating in a pandemic. I think, I've been surprised, I think a lot of us in the entire system is, has been pressure tested to an extent that I've never witnessed before any organization under the pressure test of opening schools and responding to COVID and the changing information and the staff shortages. I feel like this is a really, really important conversation, particularly, and it's very of great import to me personally. And that in order to do this well, we need to have our minds and hearts set on that rather than disaster response. I mean, I think we've seen in the listening sessions we've been in in the last couple of weeks from teachers, we've heard from parents, we've heard from staff, that this, we can't take on any more work. We, we literally cannot reasonably take on any more work. I think the question before us is, we need to look at what is, what is urgent and what is what I like to call kid urgent, which means you can wait, you know, your pink pants don't have to be washed today, that's not urgent.
Um, oh, sorry, Director DePass, I thought you were finished.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it, I literally, I, I want to do this work well and I, I, I don't feel like I have the capacity to take it on. And I know the staff, the staff has told us that really to ask for some grace, literally through the end of this month, if you recall, in order to sort of get on top of some of these emergent issues. When, when staff from the central office are in school buildings, they can't give the attention to the work that this, this body of work really deserves. I mean, this is a really key area that in equity shows up in our, in our system. And it's important to do it right and not to rush it so we can check it off, that it's done. But to do it why, and I, and I think the other thing I wanted to say, building on Director Lowry, is that I also think we should keep the community group engaged in this work. I, I just, if they're listening, I, I just want to appreciate the few conversations I've had with people that have been focused on this. This isn't to say this conversation is going away. I'm strongly in support of doing it well and doing it at a time when we have the capacity emotionally, physically to, to do the work well.
And I would say that I've invited the Foundation Reform Group to partner with me on rewriting these policies and they want to get together and I just haven't had, part of it is my own personal capacity as well to do this work well. Again, that whole tendency of mine to overpromise, underdeliver. And I, I just know that, I thought, okay, I can work on this. I started, I sent all of you, Jackson, I just sent it to you, an email about the work I had done and the research and realizing that to do this properly was going to take more time than what, what we had in the moment.
So I appreciate your comments, I'll take it under advisement. We haven't moved it. I'm going to continue to, to focus on, just like everybody else has different issues that they focus on, I'm going to continue to focus on it. I mean, I, to me, it's rather compelling that I'm looking at the list of schools that are getting their FTE paid for this year by the district and they're fundraising. So essentially they're benefiting from the float. It's like all of our highest S E F schools. So I actually think.
But it's also the last year. I just want to make sure that that's, that's clarified because operationally, you made that.
Because we didn't do anything about it yet last year also. So I, I feel like, I appreciate both of your comments. And I would say, everybody else, please let me finish Jonathan. So I, when I went around to the very beginning, I talked to everybody about their priorities and people had different priorities. And this was on some board member's list and it's on my list. And the committee brought it, committee members brought this forward over a year ago. And so I, I appreciate your comments and I'll take it into consideration. Also, just like when staff says, we need to have something added to your agenda, or the superintendent says, you know, hey, we consider this whole different draft, is, I will take that under consideration and work with the staff. And I'll happy to sit down and talk to Chief Garcia, but this isn't the time to have a debate about what the agenda is, is going to be. So I appreciate you raising it and directed to pass your interest in tackling the issue.
If I may, I, I want to appreciate both Director DePass and Director Lowry. And, and I actually don't want to speak on behalf of staff and make a conversation about staff's capacity because frankly, our community, our directors have heard loud and clear that our staff, whether they're in the classroom or in central office, were exhausted. We are exhausted. And so I, I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about the community. Our community is going through a lot of change. The pandemic has created a lot of chaos in our lives. And, and, and every time that we're asking communities, small school communities to think about possibly changes to their enrollment or their boundary, now we're talking about foundations and potentially getting, removing those conversations. We're also having different layers of conversations. I don't think it's fair for our community to, to, to experience so much change happening in one time during the middle of a pandemic. And so I'm hearing from my community, yes, I hear, you know, there are pockets of folks that are wanting to engage in different discussions and that's important, but I have to think about the 50,000 children, I have to think about their parents, I have to think about my staff. I hear our educators telling us that every time that we're discussing these items, it creates more stress, it creates more pressure of the unknown. So I'm asking, I'm imploring to the, to, to the chair and to the board to really reconsider how, what, what, what is, what is a priority at this time? Because it is really important for our community to, to think about, you know, the, for us to have healthy and good conversations about really important topics.
I hope you're not implying that the board does not take into consideration the 50,000 students, because that couldn't be further from the truth. In fact, I spent the entire weekend, based on staff asking, the entire weekend, and Monday and Tuesday, the staff asking to have change, things added to the agenda, major changes made. So yeah, everybody's stressed and I said I would take it under consideration and.
I, I, can I just jump in also? So when, when there's a, when there's a level of trauma and stress, the response is to not keep pushing, like the trauma-informed response is to say, I hear you, that sounds really hard. How can we, how can we make it so you're not, you know, thinking about jumping out of a window all day long? How can we make it so you're not on the verge of tears all day long? I think the mental health of everybody in this room and anybody that's watching is really important and it is, I, I feel like we need to, we need to move toward a, a level of just kind of generative work and not like piling more and more and more. The system's going to break. It's, it's at a breaking point right now, I should say. I heard very loudly, Chief Garcia, very loudly, and I'm, I'm also experiencing it in my body. And I, I'm just thinking what we need to do is we need to have a response that reflects what we're hearing.
Okay, which I want to say is.
And I want to say, I'm going to another meeting right now and so I'm going to have to sign off, but I wanted to make my, my concerns known and my, my hopes that this work can pause, also known before I left. I'm also okay not getting my way, so whatever you decide, Chair. But I, I just want to advocate strongly for taking care of the hearts and souls and bodies of the people that are keeping our system full right now. I think that's really important response. People are literally at a breaking point right now. I, I was at a meeting on Monday where someone literally cussed out people that were there to listen from the staff. And, and I, and I, I can't ignore that. So I, I would just strongly advocate for us showing up in a trauma-informed way and in a, in a way that restores the hearts of the, the staff that are upholding the system right now at a breaking point.
I'm frankly confused because this makes it sound like, this is like something I just added on, this was at the very beginning and discussed that we would have a conversation is like, I'm not piling it on. In fact, a lot of the stuff, okay, we could stop the recisions, like that's an easy thing to do, we can stop the recisions, we can stop, then have the, have the board stop referring this stuff to this committee or undermining the committee's work. I mean, it's, I.
It's, it's all of that. What I'm saying is that when we have information coming in, we can't operate as if we haven't heard that staff is at the breaking point. And that's, that's teachers, that's administrators, that's, that's me, that's families, that's students, is, I mean, we're, we're seeing the stress level of the adults in this situation. We're seeing the kids act out. And so as, as we learn more about what's happening, it's important for us to respond in a way that shows that we have, we've heard and that we believe people. And so I'm not, when I said the word piling on, that was probably not the good I worked, did, I think it's a good time for us to, we need to, we need to do triage.
Julia, I hear your frustration, I'm hearing that in this moment. And I, I think that, I think you've been incredibly responsive in this meeting, shifting the agenda, I think you've listened to staff. What I'm asking for is to pause this specific policy because I, I do not think we have the capacity to reform fundraising well in this moment. That is all I'm, that's all that I'm asking for.
And I said that I would take that under advisement, and if Michelle, you want to remove me as Chair, you can.
I would not go so far as to, that's not on the table at all. On the table, on the table.
Can I follow everybody for just a moment? Because what I'm hearing, we're, we're moving now, we're, we're moving, the, the situation is moving, everything is moving and it's going somewhere that things don't need to go. I heard, I heard loud and clearly that there was a, a recommendation for pause and I also heard loud and clearly from our chair, from the policy committee, that, that this was something that she would take under advisory. But, and also I heard loud and clearly from, from some of us that this is, that the, the point that we're at right now seems to be a breaking point and people are concerned about the, the well-being, the psychological, mental well-being of everyone involved. And then I also heard loud and clear that this is something that's very, very important to, to our chair, to make sure that things, the minority, you know, marginalized communities don't continue to get overlooked, which is why, you know, this is something that's so pressing for her. All of these things can be true at the same time and it does not mean that anyone is in a bad space. It simply means that, you know, this is important and, and this is important. And so both of these things can be true. We're not making it, there's, unless I missed something, there's no decision being made tonight. And so I, I think at this moment, so that things, and this is to me an example of, of us being pushed because we're asking for more and then we're, we're asking, we're asking, but then we're saying, no, I don't want no more. Stop, don't, don't give me, so there's a lot going on, on both, from both sides. And so I just want to be clear that we're not asking anybody to do anything tonight, that no decisions have to be tonight about this that I'm aware of anyway.
It's not on the agenda as a.
Yeah, so, so a pause in this, to have a pause in this dialogue is, I think, what needs to, I mean, why are we talking about something, spinning our wheels about something that's not even on the agenda for us to be talking about right now? Thank you all for, you know, in my mind, you know, for like all the work that was done and thank you for all the information. And, and now let's take all this stuff into consideration and let's come back whatever's fresh to mind. Because I, I think right now is, the conversation is leaving, leaving a place of being actual functional.
I appreciate your thoughtful words.
And I think it's.
I think a good point to end on. So thank you Director Green for like pulling it all together and recognizing, I think whatever everybody's, the different issues we've got put on the table, so thank you. And so the, the committee meeting is adjourned.